Tom.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, everyone, welcome to the September 8th Board of Selectmen meeting in the town of Plimpton, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th and 15 orders. We're doing this meeting by remote participation. People may join through Zoom or they may join through phone. And we're making every effort to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And just a reminder that the recording is not to be considered an official public document. So, the first order of business is two books preserved. We'll take this item first and then we'll probably go a little bit out of order so that guests can be involved in the part of meeting they want to be and then get out of here. So, we'll be making a motion tonight to appropriate funds from the Capital Purpose Fund for the purpose of retiring the two Brooks Preserve bond. We all know about this. Linda has sent around a document just for super brief review. The town had the opportunity to purchase the Atwood estate. The price was such that we needed to do some creative financing, multiple sources, CPC, private donations, the sale of lots. The sale of lots became quite a challenge amid COVID and certain real estate restrictions. Through additional fundraising, we've gotten to the place that we're $24,500 short. And the Capital Purpose Fund allows the appropriation of funds less than 25,000 with the positive approval of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. I have been in touch over the last couple of months with the Chair of the Finance Committee multiple times, keeping him appraised of the situation. Hopefully, we will vote tonight. We will be heading toward the next Finance Committee meeting. Definitely want to be on the agenda. Hopefully, can get a positive vote there, retire the bond, and be done with this part of things. So, we have, Linda Letty is with us tonight if there are questions about her summary document or questions in general.
I have no questions.
Wow. All right.
Mark, one question. Is it Deb from the Halifax, Plimpton Halifax Express that's with us? And then Christie?
Christie.
Okay.
Sorry, Christie's here.
Hi, Christie.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good thing.
And who's Deb?
Actually, so that's one. And then we have one labeled owner. Who presume, oh, it's the fire chief.
Hi, Steve.
So, does that mean you own all the problems tonight?
Maybe. I got my computer fixed and now apparently it owns me, so that's fine.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion and then we'll offer one more opportunity for discussion. So, I make a motion that we approve the appropriation of $24,500 from the Capital Purpose Fund. What's that?
You have the amount wrong.
24,500?
950.
How much?
950, 24,950.
Wow, it changed.
No, it has never changed, never, never, never. It has not.
Wow, I didn't read it closely enough.
Read it closely enough, right.
All right, appropriate $24,950 from the Capital Purpose Fund for the purpose of retiring the two Brooks Preserve debt.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. I, Linda did, of course, an amazing amount of work on all aspects of this project and not the least of which putting together the document that we received a couple of days ago that will have some historical, some legal significance, but also a lot to learn about future projects in terms of real estate. But Linda has been incredible, as we all know, along the way. And we salute her longevity, her energy, and her wisdom.
Time for me to check out here. But thank you all for the vote. That was wonderful to get this part done. And really, we look forward to sort of getting into the opening phase, you know, soonish. We'll wait to see what Middleborough is doing about the Soul Street access. And we might do a little door keyhole access from Prospect if things are going to go slowly. But anyhow, it's great to have this whole legal acquisition part over with. And thank you all for your support. Right from the beginning, you guys at the Selectmen were the ones to take the plunge at the beginning and vote to go for the right first refusal and to buy it. So, that started us out of the door. So, thank you all very much.
Quick question. What is the Soul Street access? Is there an issue there?
No, I think it's just a process. Liz could probably answer this better. It's a, both towns voted at their respective town meetings.
Right.
And I haven't received an update yet from Middleborough, but I did send something over to them just to get a status update. They're working on the language of the lease agreement, the last I knew.
Okay, okay, thanks.
That may delay things is it looks like maybe there's some special legislation for the state because it's a change of use. That's not absolutely clear the last time we talked about it, whether that's necessary or not. But that may be a step and that'll obviously add further delay. But we'll keep pounding away at it.
Yeah, so anyhow, we're glad to have this part over. And now it's just an access issue. And if we can get Soul Street going relatively quickly, we'll probably stick holding with that. But if it's going to be delayed, we have a little keyhole that we could use off Prospect Road that's much smaller, but we could get it started because people want to get out there and we want to give them some access. So, anyhow, that's it. But thank you all very much.
Thanks, Linda. So, I note that Howard Randall is on. Are there any other guests on at this point? I don't see any others. Howard, we're, we welcome you. Okay. I bet he'll find his voice before long. So, I think we can jump right in now to. Well, should we do grant announcements? And so, the fire chief can do his thing and then move from there?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So, I guess we have grant announcements from the Fire Department and the COA. So, Fire Department first.
Oh, nice to see everybody. It's been a long time. Everyone's looking well. We've had a good couple of weeks. We have received notification from FEMA through the AFG Grant Program. That's an annual program that provides funding opportunities to fire departments. We've been notified we have received a total of $230,000 from them. We have a 5% match, which we voted in at last town meeting as a special article. So, that gives us $242,000. And that is to be used for replacing the old military brush truck that's in the parking lot. That will be going back to Department of Conservation. And we're in the process now of designing a new vehicle that will meet the needs of this town, we believe, for a long time. So, that was exciting. We also received through, name of the CESF, exactly what that stands for, I'm not sure. I can't remember. COVID emergency, something, supplemental funding. That came in, it's Department of Justice grant, actually. We received just under $12,000 from them. That is going toward replacing the air masks that the firefighters use. And so, everyone will be issued their own individual masks so we don't have a cross contamination issue. This attaches to the SCVA bottles. In addition to that, there'll be adapters on them so we can put filtration systems on them. So, if we're going into a contaminated atmosphere, whether it be chemical or biological, you know, some of the challenges we had with COVID, that it will be kind of all in one sort of thing. So, those have been ordered. And we're still waiting to hear back on two other federal grant programs. So, cautiously optimistic on those two. And if the board so indulge me later, I'd like to speak about another program that we're moving forward on. We got a very positive meeting tonight with Board of Health on as well. So, but that's our grant update.
Chief, I didn't capture the amount of money on that last one.
It's just under 12,000. I think it's.
12,000?
Yeah, it's 11,835 or something like that.
Okay, I'll call it 12,000.
Exactly, yeah. So, that was a good couple of weeks.
Very nice.
And that $12,000 one, that's not a match. That's a, that's a full grant. There's no matching fund on that at all.
Liz, was there something else that the fire chief was going to talk about under COVID updates?
Yes, yes. I wanted him to talk a little about a program that we hope to be rolling out as well as some ideas for COVID CARES funding reimbursement. So, if you would be so kind as to skip ahead to that agenda item, he could do that and then get on with his evening.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to bounce around a little, but we're trying to maximize or minimize the amount of time people are having to spend in the meeting. So, back to fire chief, please.
Yeah, so, these are interesting times, to say the least. And if you don't stay fluid, you drown, literally. There's, things are changing rapidly, not just in the COVID world itself, the process, the disease, whatever we want to call it, but also in how we respond to it. And the Board of Health has been incredibly helpful on quite a bit of how we put things together. And moving forward, we were one of the first towns to get the town ball opened in some fashion. I think it's been pretty successful overall. But we need to get this to the next level. And it's something we had talked about here in the department for quite a while, prior to COVID days. It's one of the main reasons we brought Captain Davis on board from Paul River. And that is the Community Paramedicine Law. And what that is, it will allow this department in partnership with the Board of Health. And that partnership is mandated by statute through the Department of Public Health. We'll be able to get together and provide services to the townspeople at no charge that they haven't necessarily had in a formal manner before. Something as simple as trip and fall protection in people's homes, helping them assess things like that, to some mental health training, pharmaceutical help and issues to as far down the road as becoming an advocate for many of our people that just don't know where to turn for social services and working with that. And in addition, as this rolls out, we will also be in a position to provide vaccinations, screenings. There's some exciting COVID testing coming out right now that literally takes about five minutes to process. You can do it on scene. All these, all these different aspects to just helping people with daily life, especially in these confusing times, is something we're moving forward with. Now, the really fun part of it is, is no cost. There's no cost for the application system. It's, in fact, we have the application drafted now. It has to be done with the support of the Board of Health. We, I just came from meeting with them. I'm cautiously optimistic that they're going to move forward with us as a partnership with this. And there's a joint oversight with it, so it has a series of checks and balances. Very exciting. We're not the only town doing it. Ducksbury has done this. Halifax is in process. Hanover's had a very successful model that they started over a year ago. And the other part of it, I had a conversation with Tom O'Brien today, Plymouth County Treasurer, and explained to him what we were doing because there are two ways we can do this. We can be at 100%, no outlay at all, or we can kind of go the gold standard with it and spend some money, but the money is 100% reimbursable. When I explained to Tom exactly the model we were doing, he guided me on what I need to put down on paper, which is something we had already drafted anyways. And any startup cost we choose to go forward with, we, that'll be reimbursable 100% because it's born out of this COVID crisis. And this crisis is not going away, whether we have a second wave or not. But just as an example, talking to Chief Viveros in Halifax, picture this, and I hope this doesn't happen, I pray to God it doesn't, but say we open the school and say somebody in the school is suspected to have been exposed to COVID, whether directly or maybe at a family function or maybe they've been diagnosed, I don't know. We would be able to actually screen everybody, the entire population, within a matter of a couple of hours. You know, it's that, it's that flexible, it's that fluent. And what's really nice about this program too, because it's not always going to be COVID, there'll be other things popping up. It's a very, it's almost like a cafeteria plan where we can, everything from car seat installations to help with the elderly, to food things, that they set description, helping people with their prescriptions. It's almost endless. And done as a joint venture with Board of Health. And I hope COA would, you know, help us with this together on it. It's going to be a huge benefit to the residents and visitors of the town. And we're very excited about it here at the department. I hope the board would support us on it.
What's the official name of it, chief?
Community Paramedicine.
Paramedicine.
And how long? Once this is approved, how long to get it up and running?
30 days.
Wow.
Yeah, so if I get the, if the Board is, the Board of Health is considering their sign off because they do, they, the local authority, local public health authority has to sign off as an attestation of support and also as some degree of oversight. We work together on it. If they choose to sign that tonight or tomorrow, I will submit the application tomorrow. It's on average 30 days from the time we submit the application. Give us plenty of time to wrap up. The other thing we need to get is the hospital that's given us the verbal okay. I just need to get our medical director to sign it. We'll work with them on the training. There's a few things that we need to pop up on. And I do have a couple of RNs, excuse me, registered nurses that are willing to, for free, come in and train our personnel, especially on various needs of geriatric service and things like that. So, a lot of thoughts going into it. Cheryl has done an amazing job, Captain Davis. And this is, this is very exciting. This is something we wanted to do about a year ago, but now we're in a position for reimbursement for some of the outlay. And it's, it's a unique opportunity, very unique.
Sounds great, chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have been busy. Hey, question for you. You said it's reimbursable. What's the original funding source?
So, to do this in the perfect world, in, especially in the COVID world, where there's always the issue of contamination and such, we would be looking at the purchase of a vehicle. And so, as not to add to the fleet, we would get rid of the old pickup truck that's out in the lot. Maybe we wouldn't necessarily have to surplus it, maybe it should be used elsewhere, highway. I don't know whether I'm interested in it, but we would figure that out. That vehicle is 100% reimbursable through the CARES Act. And then, along with that, a few monitoring type devices here or there. But again, because it's, it's born out of COVID and its primary function out of the gate is for COVID mitigation and testing, reimbursable 100%.
I understand, chief, that Kingston was reimbursed 100% for an ambulance through this program.
Yes, they were. They were reimbursed $380,000 for an ambulance. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to do that because we actually got one on a, we have the ambulance coming through from the town meeting vote. And it's that little fine line, whereas our ambulance was budgeted for, we can't go to the well and say, oh, we're not budgeting it now, we're going to get it through the CARES Act.
Is this part of the 300 million, I think, that was given to Plymouth County?
It's 90 million. It was a $3 trillion bill that was passed by the federal government, 90 million of it wound up in Plymouth County, yes.
Okay, thank you. Stand corrected.
All right.
Sounds great.
Sure does.
Nice work, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just one. Chief, you wrote this up in an email to us. Can I just plagiarize that for the notes?
Absolutely, absolutely. That email I wrote you, that is a forward of the actual application process as well as the types of programs that are available through the Community Paramedicine. And it's not limited to those as well.
Thank you.
It's like the cafeteria plan, you can tailor it to your community, which is what makes it very unique.
Great.
Chief, if we have groups that might be interested in working with you, like possibly OCPC, the AAA, they have some grant money available. Can I have them contact you to talk about possible opportunities?
I am, I'm addicted to grants. So, absolutely, we're always looking for alternative funding. And if it needs expanding the mission a little bit to bring them under umbrella, more than happy to, more than.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, so, the next, actually, the next four elements relate to Plimpton Roads. A couple are the Declaration of Safety Zones, which we'll get to. And we will be taking a look at the Main and Ring Road intersection. But why don't we start with citizen concern about heavy truck traffic? And I see that we have guest Howard Randall on and Joe Beck on. And this agenda item was put on mainly because of a concern shared with us by Joe. I don't know if you want to speak to the board, Joe, and let us know what's on your mind.
Sure will, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, the, I've been living on Main Street now for 37 years. And the traffic is absolutely brutal with 18-wheel trucks. And it's, they're just using our streets as cut-throughs. And it's a very dangerous situation, especially with school start next week, it's going to be even worse. These trucks, I was behind an 18-wheeler today coming home from the Carver side. And he actually had to make a wide turn to go into the library, part of the library driveway to turn onto Main Street, which took over the other side of Main Street, the side going up towards the town hall. They're flying by with no respect to anybody on the streets. You can't even drive your bike or walk safely on Main Street and some of the other streets. The SLT, for instance, because a lot of them are coming from SLT. It's not all SLT trucks themselves, there's other ones called S&amp;P, trucking out a bran tree. And those two guys have the 18-wheel rigs and they just fly down the street. I've sat out there for over a couple of hours and counted over 58 wheels because it's just being used as a cut-through because people don't want to go all the way down 58 to 106. So, the same in a few miles. My main concern is the safety of all the people that live there on the Main Street and on Upland Road. They're still using Upland Road. I came home last night from New Hampshire. Stop before somebody gets. Just one, I mean, I've gone through Pembroke and taken pictures because they were using their streets as cut-throughs also. And Pembroke has put up signs that says, no commercial vehicles over two and a half tons and no through trucks whatsoever. We have to do something for the safety of our residents of this town. Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I hope you got to hear that.
I think we did. And so, there are a couple of things that have been done or that we are looking at. But first of all, I just want to check with John Trainer. A while back, when we looked at this issue, I think you checked in with SLT, the project on Spring Street and Carver. How much longer do they have to go? Do you have any idea?
I was told at the time, and actually, it was Tom Milius. Tom Milius and I went out there. But the president wasn't there, so Tom followed up and called him. And he said the program was coming to a halt within a couple of weeks, but that he would tell the truck drivers to go down 44 to 58 and go that way. And I haven't heard anything, so I didn't know that, in fact, they weren't doing that.
Yeah, what they're doing, John, they're coming down 58, but then cutting down Main Street across to 106. I was behind one. I actually followed S&amp;P trucking the other day and took a video on my dash cam of them going up Main Street, then up Crescent, down, down, down Upland Road and around to Mayflower Road and down to, what do you call, SLT trucking.
Yeah. I know, Matt, you circulated some information to us. I certainly think that, you know, Crescent Street and Upland Road and these back roads absolutely ought to be no commercial trucking. I don't know where the line is in terms of what we can do with something like Main Street. You know, how far can we go with the law, with the law allow us?
And I may be able to comment on that in a moment or so. But, so, it was Tom who spoke to SLT?
Yes, he talked to Mr. Ovoshinsky, who is the president.
Yeah, so maybe one thing we can do in the immediate is see if Tom can talk to him again and keep him on 58 rather than Main. Could we ask Liz to speak to Tom about that?
Yep, I'll take care of that.
Okay, so that's thing one. Thing two.
Can I, can I add to that, Howard?
Welcome, Howard, and glad to you for you to add.
Yes, I would say the same is true for cautionage and Prospect Road. We have tremendous, my neighbor said, we had dinner last night and she had counted 35 heavy gravel trucks. And maybe we'll be falling out of something west of us, the ramps down, further down on Plimpton Street and Middleborough. And plus, we have the added traffic going both ways on this, on Prospect, and I'm sure on that section where it's, yes, some of the arsonage of trucks going to the Middleborough landfill. I'd like to call it a dump, but I guess it's, I don't know if you want to do that. But it's, that particular operation, I'd say the gravel operation is six days a week that we see that. And it simply adds or distracts from our life here, and I know it does to others. These are huge trucks with loads of gravel, sometimes seemingly going both ways with loads. It has to be tremendous impact on that section of the road that is not improved. And I'm not asking you to improve it. In fact, I think anytime somebody offers to improve a road, there needs to be some kind of hearing and impact statement that goes along with it. But I would add, our area of town being overrun with heavy vehicle traffic. And again, it's.
We hear you on that. I, one thing that hopefully we're going to do tonight is hopefully pass a couple of safety zones. One of them on Ring Road and Main, and the other Winnetuckseton and Prospect with better signage for 20 mile an hour speed limit. That might, hopefully, that can slow them down. The one other thing we've done, knowing that this was going to come up, I checked in with Town Council last week. And he, this afternoon, sent along a primer on dealing, on towns dealing with truck traffic. And so, we have just received this, and I haven't had a chance to fully digest it. But he makes clear that Selectmen can enact regulations to restrict heavy commercial traffic. If we do so, it has to be certified by MassDOT, Department of Transportation. And it has to be done consistent with public interest. There's a whole proper process to go through, needs of traffic study, engineered plans. But, and anywhere that we do restrict traffic, there has to be suitable alternate rights. So, this is going to need some work, but there is the possibility and the power to do it. And beyond talking to SLT and these safety zones, we can certainly look into this further. And I think the Selectmen will want to take a look at it, maybe in concert with the High Ware Superintendent.
You know, for the longest time, Mark, we, we had a hiatus with Middleborough. As I shared with you, I think they're in the process of renegotiating their contract with the current operator. But I think initially, we did not have these, these trucks here. I know when Fast Eddie over 44 sand and gravel wanted to extend and put a transfer or a landfill there, you know, I attended many, many meetings. And, you know, with the whole idea of trying to steer this stuff away from Plimpton Streets. But something changed, and maybe it was the operator that changed at the Middleborough landfill. But when it did, we began to pick up the. But when it did, we began to pick up the traffic. A greater concern or equal concern is the fact that I find some of these trucks going across the recently repaired Winnetuxet Road Bridge, below us here, the lower bridge. And that certainly isn't designed to handle, even though it's signed, you know, no trucks. They're clearly have to be coming up that way because I see them come up to Connor and head towards the Middleborough landfill. One of the seven bruises maybe could help us.
Liz, do you think connecting up with your equivalent in Middleborough in terms of the landfill traffic to see if there's any help there?
Sure, I'm happy to reach out to Bob and see what I can find out.
Okay. So we have some action steps and...
I'm particularly concerned, I think they want to expand that operation.
I'm sorry, Harold, Howard, that broke up. Can you say that again?
Yeah, I'm particularly concerned because I think they are looking to expand that operation and the area that they use as a landfill.
Well, we're glad to pursue that, and we're glad to pursue if regulating or restricting truck traffic is possible. I'm sure the process will take time, but we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
All right, anything else anyone wants to say on this subject?
No, I thank you very much, Mark, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, sir, and thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
All right, onward. So next, before we deal with Declaration of Safety Zones, Main Street and Ring Road intersection configuration. We've touched on this subject several times. There is an alternate design that has been shared with us. And I think, John, you and Rob are out there looking at it. Would you like to comment on this alternate possibility?
I think there's two designs out there that you forwarded. Is that correct? Rob, is there one?
No, no, I only sent you one. It was just an overlay of the existing intersection. One was the existing, and one was the rough sketch.
So my comments would revolve around, I personally don't have a issue with how it's laid out, as long as we can make it safer. I understand the people's concern that we might either speed up traffic or we might actually physically come onto some land and take it. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to take what the police chief has said is probably the second most hazardous intersection after Palmer and Center Street. And just see if we can figure out something and put a strategy, go forward. I don't know, Rob, if you've had a chance to find any more about what it would cost to move the pole.
I'd have to come up with some engineered plans on where we'd want it to be moved before they will give me a price on what it would cost to move it.
Not even a ballpark? I mean, I heard a crazy figure of $200,000, and that just seems like it's crazy.
That might have been why they threw out the crazy figure, was just overestimating. I don't entirely know without getting a plan engineered first.
Yeah. I feel, you know, I feel a little uncomfortable that we're going to end up sitting here a year from now saying the same thing. And I guess that's what I'm trying to drive, is how do we move this forward? This is my sixth year on the Selectmen, and we've talked about it every year. So I'd just like to see us maybe figuring out. I'm very concerned about cars coming from 106 and making that left onto Ring Road because a lot of them just go right through. With school starting, I'm not sure how COVID-19 plays into this. More traffic, less traffic. But it just seems like something we ought to sit down and see if we can figure it out.
John, there's going to be more traffic with the COVID because with the buses, more people have to be driving their children to school. So we're not going to be getting a break from, I mean, maybe not every day, but there still will be a lot of people that will be using the roads. And I agree with you, I think we need to find some way to get moving with this, whether we're looking for grants. This is our second most dangerous intersection in town. I think it needs to be a priority. And, you know, maybe there's got to be something out there to help us put a plan together. I can't believe that there wouldn't be.
I agree, Christine. And I think if we actually put a little committee together, maybe, and I'm just thinking aloud, and actually involve the Butters, maybe we can figure this out in a way that works for everybody.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with Rob on this. Or you, John, you've already been involved. I don't know if Mark wants to do it. But I think just so that it continues to move, that maybe one of us needs to work with Rob and the Butters and look at some funding sources and see what we can do to get a plan together.
I'd be glad to work with him, and if you wanted, that's fine too, either way.
Rob, who do you want to work with? Just kidding, no pressure.
You're going to make a friend and lose one.
Yeah, did he say neither? I'm sorry.
So, look, it seems like one of the things is, there's going to be money involved, at least even in the conceptual engineering piece. And I think certainly, and maybe the committee can work on this, I think we're going to be needing to bring to town meeting the request for some funds.
I think you're probably right.
And, I mean, in the meantime, presumably, we're going to, or hopefully, we're going to declare a safety zone tonight. And I think that's going to be the inexpensive and the immediate step. And we're going to see if it helps. Asking people to slow down at 20 miles an hour in that area can only help as long as people do it.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're going to have to do is actually put some police cars on Prospect and also on Main Street, Ring Road, just to drive a message that we're serious about this. The sign, as you come up from 106 on Main Street, is presently 30 miles an hour. And boy, if you stand there and watch them, they are not going 30 miles an hour when they come around there.
Yeah, I totally agree on that. I mean, I remember the time, which doesn't seem to be now, when Plumpton was known as a speed trap. And that's a reputation we'd love to have again. And I don't know to what degree increased police presence or police car presence could be there, but I think it'd be really helpful.
And I think, yeah, a police car on the corner of Ring Road at, you know, school time would certainly slow things down, coming and going.
So I'll be glad to speak to the police chief.
May I offer a comment?
Sure.
Yeah. It would seem that in terms of land area, that Mr. Andrews might be able to help out in terms of creating some visibility on his land. But I'd also wonder if making that shot stop from, let's say, where the school is out to Main Street a one-way. So you can't turn in there. And you would have to go further up Main Street to get over to that area.
I don't know, it seems to me then we're putting a lot of traffic onto Crescent Street, which is a more narrow road, certainly than the shot piece of Ring Road.
Yeah, just a thought. Yeah. On every strict entrance to certain hours when, you know, in school.
Yeah.
I see a lot of that at Milton, where they restrict entry. If you go into Milton Hospital, there's some subdivisions along the way off of 28. And, you know, no entry, really, I guess, until after the school buses have...
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, as Betsy says. And then I think later in the day, to avoid conflict with the school activity. Just a thought, 90 cents.
Okay. Anything else on this subject? So we have a bunch of action steps, we have a committee, we'll talk to the police chief. Hopefully, we'll have a safety zone, and it'll be a work in progress. All right, all right, to move on to safety zones then.
Are you going to talk about Prospect and Winnetuxet?
Yes. Let's make that the very next thing. So a while back, the Selectmen did authorize their ability to declare safety zones, which would make the speed limit 20 miles an hour in these zones. We've talked about this a number of times. And I'm going to make a motion tonight to declare a safety zone at the Winnetuxet and Prospect intersection, and also to make a safety zone at the Main Street and Ring Road intersection. So those will be two motions. Any discussion or comments on them before we vote?
A question for you. So how far out from the intersection, do we have to specify that in our vote? How, the size of the safety zone? Or do we just set the safety zone and...
I think we check with town council on this. And I think it was left to our discretion, and I am comfortable leaving it to the Highway Superintendent's discretion to do moderate and appropriate spacing of signs to fulfill the task we're trying to do. By the way, we also check with town council, and I think I shared this email, that there's nothing in the law, in the state law...
I saw somebody in...
What's that?
No, I think it was...
Works, by you.
There's nothing in the state law that would stop us from receiving the safety zone at any time in the future if we decided to.
I'm good to go.
I'm comfortable with that, with Rob's discretion, and hopefully signage or road markings, just something to let people know they have to slow down.
Driving around, and particularly as we see rotaries and roundabouts put in, it is clear people are being much more creative with the use of paint to direct people and alert people. And I hope maybe that could be part of this along the way. So get out your coloring book, Rob. All right, so...
Well, I...
Yes, please.
Yeah. The accidents here, I'm surprised that we're not the winner of the contest. We had another one this weekend where the Winnetuxet provided truck was backing up to download in that shot section between Postnich and Connor, Winnetuxet and Prospect. And people came flying around the lower corner and ran into the back of a pickup truck. So that's, by my count, three or four serious accidents in the last two and a half months. If you go past my house, you will see a large tree at the corner of my driveway. And there's another row of spruce trees behind that. It used to be a second row of trees between the road and the spruce trees. But that wiped out by two Volkswagen's coming through. If you look at the big tree, you'll see two scars on it. And the rock that's in front of it is oriented the way it is because it got flipped over by the last person. A month ago, my mailbox and my old hitching post that was at the edge of the road got wiped out, and the car flipped three times in the air. Prior to that, my almost 200-year-old stone wall was hit. And I'm afraid my homeowner is going to cancel my insurance. So something clearly needs to be done here. The blinking light, we've been here nearly 50 years, and it's probably five or six times it's been wiped out. There's nothing, I'd hope that you would include the Postnich corner along with the Winnetuxet-Prospect corner in the safety zone. And you should also understand, when you slow somebody at 20 miles an hour, there's going to be a place where they go to what the next speed limit is. And that's right now in front of my house and my neighbor's house. But sadly, my neighbor across the street, and you can check with the fire chief, they're there at least twice a month, if not more. And that's an absolutely blind roadway for anybody coming around the corner of Winnetuxet Street. So I would hope that if we're going to lead people out of the 20 mile an hour zone, it's somewhere where there's houses set back from the road and some clear space because they just got it. On the weekends, this is Le Mans, this is a chicane where motorcycles and the last car to the wall was a brand-new Camaro, never tested its brakes.
Rob, can we run the signs from Postnich down to Prospect? So it takes on both curves?
I believe we can. If you want, we can meet and put together a plan.
Seems like that would be...
I would love to be part of that if I may.
If we could make a 20-mile zone all the way down, that'd be great.
If you don't mark that section between Postnich and Prospect, people coming in off of 58 on Winnetuxet have no idea what the speed limit is when they come through the Postnich, so...
Yeah, the intent is, from each of the three ways in, that people are alerted to the 20 mile an hour speed limit, both ways, coming in, coming out. So we hear you, Howard, and we certainly can work with Rob and get that set up.
Because one of the three cars, one of the three cars coming up the hill.
I think we lost you, Howard, but we certainly heard you.
I'm saying, cars coming up Winnetuxet, crossing the bridge and up the hill towards the blinking light, I would say one in the street, don't bother to stop. You know, they just fly around the corner.
Well, hopefully, the safety zone, the labeling of that, maybe more police presence. I think those are the things we could do.
Yeah. And I would back up if I...
Sorry, Howard, I think we lost you again.
Why don't we make a vote?
Okay, we're going to go, so there's a motion to create these two safety zones. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Probably not. Any abstentions? So we have some safety zones. Rob, we look forward to your thoughtful and creative efforts on this.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm working on my...
Sorry, Howard, you're going in and out. I think we're going to move on before we lose...
Okay, do that. Thank you.
Thank you. There was one other grant, or sorry, something, somewhere?
No.
One other grant announcement, the COA van. Did you want to say anything about that, Liz?
I did. So we are finally in receipt of our new Council on Aging Vans. That was paid for, for the most part, by a grant from MassDOT. And the town had voted back at a special town meeting almost a year ago now to appropriate the matching funds for that, which was... to um appropriate the matching funds for that, which was $12,501. Um, and Mass Stop paid for all the rest through that grant and it's an eight passenger handicap accessible van. And um, our van driver is going to be getting some lessons with operating the wheelchair lift. And um, we're in the process of getting it registered and everything is set up on the town's insurance and everything. So that's a huge win for, for us and our seniors. Now, um, it'll be much easier for when our van driver takes some of those individuals to doctor's appointments and it just, it opens up a lot more opportunities. So we're really happy about that.
Really very professional looking and all the better that so much of it was paid for with a grant.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, uh, we have a Council on Aging meeting next Monday, the 14th. And uh, we'll be talking about that there. So if anybody wants to join us, it's at 10:30 in the morning.
John, are they going to keep that old van, the gray one?
I think the uh, well, maybe Liz, you know better than I, but I think the intent is at least for a short time to keep it. One of the things we don't know is what kind of condition it's in. It may not be keepable.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, John. That's correct. We want to keep it at least for the short term until we know that our primary van driver is comfortable operating the larger one. And then we also have on the horizon that possibility of joining GATRA. Um, they still have us kind of in a holding pattern right now. They said that when they convene their next board meeting, that they would take up adding us to their network. But that might open up some other possibilities and I don't know specifically yet, but it could include them providing us with a driver, for example, to drive that larger vehicle. And then the minivan might be helpful for Jim to operate or vice versa. It's not a bad idea, I don't think anyway, to keep the minivan around at least for the short term. Until we have a better handle on the transportation needs of the town.
Thanks, Liz.
All right. Uh, next agenda items, 127 Late Street, 61B Forestry. Um, so we did receive a letter from Ken Thompson.
Mark, I, I talked to Ken Thompson. Apparently the assessor has said, since it's not coming out of 61 Forestry, the whole amount staying in, there's no need for the selectmen to do anything.
I, and, and that may well be. My concern was um that I, this letter seems to say this is a sale. And if it's a sale, um, my understanding, even I, we've never done a 61B, but that town would still have the right of first refusal.
That's conflicts with uh what the assessor told us.
And, and she may well be right, but I think maybe um we need to check with town council on this.
Sure. Well, Liz, why don't you, Jerry?
I'll find that out.
Great, thank you. Um, so presumably if that's not the case, that this doesn't trigger the right of first refusal, then I think we don't need any other action, if that's the case.
That's correct. So if council says it doesn't need anything further, um, you just won't see this again as an agenda item. Uh, I believe Wendy's reasoning was that where they're keeping the land in chapter, that it didn't require anything additional, but we can see. I'll run it by Jonathan Eggman just to make sure.
Uh, she may well be right, but we'll just make sure. Okay. Um, school district information update.
Well, John, you look tired.
Uh, well, that's, of course, it's 2020. That's what the year of being tired. Um, so some good news from the school front. Uh, you know, the teachers and the administration were able to get together and um, I'm freezing up here. Just want to let everyone, all right. Uh, the teachers and, and the administration were able to get together and figure out what they were going to do from a school reopening plan. If you remember, uh, we had provided, um, we had provided the uh school with the opportunity to start with a phased in hybrid approach, which would allow them to start most folks remotely and then bring in, you know, at a more slow pace, bring in students back into the school. Uh, after meeting and looking at the different cohorts, and if you remember, we have most of the students broken up into cohort A and B, which go each two days a week. Everyone goes remote on Wednesdays. You have a third cohort where it's just fully remote students and then a fourth that's high needs. Um, that goes four days a week with Wednesday remote. Uh, looking at the, at the group that we had for that cohort D ended up being small enough and dispersed across the grades that actually it made more sense to get everyone back into school uh the week of the 16th. So schools will start on the 16th. Uh, that's a Wednesday, which means it's fully remote. Uh, Thursday, they'll have cohorts B and D will be in school for in-person classes on Thursday and Friday. And then uh, we'll start with the full schedule the next week, which will be Monday, Tuesday with A and D, Wednesday fully remote, and then Thursday, Friday with B and D. So um, that's definitely a benefit and it's exactly what I think the school committee had hoped would happen in, in allowing the folks that know how to do this to make decisions about how it makes most sense for the Denne. Um, with, with that, you're going to end up between 85 and 95 uh kids in the school any one school day. Um, so that's a little less than half of what we would, would normally have in the school. Lot of changes going on in the buildings with respect to removing any unnecessary furniture out of classrooms. Uh, the cafeteria setup, as I've been told, is um odd to say the least, but you have to try, have to keep everyone at six feet because you can't eat food with a mask. Um, and uh lots of signage going up around the school and protocols about how to move in the hallways and how to be able to deal with um recess and so on and so forth. Uh, so uh, everything is, is moving along. Um, well, um, we've had work done from a HVAC perspective to make sure we're getting appropriate air circulation in the buildings. Um, and we've also been taking advantage and thank you to the town for that of being able to leverage some of the CARES Act funds in order to um make some changes to the school to just make it a little bit safer and cleaner, including, you know, the upgrading of a lot of touchless uh items, particularly with respect to faucets and paper towel dispensers and things like that, as well as various supplies and PPE, uh, and also uh, you know, computers. So um, there's a lot still sort of in flux. Um, the staff did a kindergarten um sort of open house for the different kindergarten classes uh late last week. And I just heard on the school committee meeting um half an hour ago that they are planning to get that together for each of the grades before school opens so that parents and kids can attend and be able to take a look at what things are going to look like and what, because the school is going to look quite a bit different than what you would normally expect. Um, but all in all, I think we're in pretty good shape. We also formed a health and safety advisory committee, including staff from the school. Uh, we have a parent on there who um works for um helping to get uh daycares and childcare centers open. So she has a lot of experience there and that committee will help to serve uh to, to take the information in and help make decisions with respect to what we do with the school and any health and safety issues. So a lot's still going on, but I think we're in, we're in good shape and, and Mr. Nito feels very confident that we'll be able to have, pending nothing else happening between now and then, we'll be able to kick off school on 16th and, and move through the schedule as planned.
Any questions for John?
This good work. I know it's been a long struggle.
Yeah, that we, the school committee got a little bit of a break here, but I don't think Peter did. You know, uh, from the moment that you get commitments from the parents, uh, then you had to create the cohorts and then had to figure out how we're going to staff those. And we, you know, we do have to thank the, the, you know, teachers for being very flexible and willing to, to get this, make this happen. We wouldn't be able to do it without them because it would not be a normal year for them.
John, do you, um, could you send me just the piece on how they're going to be attending? Because I didn't capture it. And uh, I want to get that part right. I don't want to screw it up.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, a couple of diagrams on that I can, I'll send around.
Great. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, next item is uh, or is that Bree who's come on?
Yes, ma'am.
John Trainer, shall we have Bree take up the rest of the minutes?
Please.
Very much appreciate, John. I know we threw that on you at the last minute. Um, Bree, you're on for minute taking. Um, welcome and thank you.
Where are you in the?
Uh, here's where we are. Boards and committees, open seats. And um, the list is as follows, and then we can comment on any of them. School committee, board of registrar, board of registrars, council on aging, and area 58. Um, I'll just mention the area 58 one. Uh, the area 58 board of directors has um two directors from Plumton and a proportionate number from the other two towns. Karen Foyes served as, on that board for many years, has been indispensable. Um, she um is asking to have a turn off and so there is an opening. Uh, that uh board meets maybe two to four times a year, very congenial, congenial board. Um, nice opportunity to learn some more of the ins and outs of uh public broadcasting. So um, if anyone knows of a, uh, someone that might be interested, we'd, we'd love to entertain that possibility. John Williamson, do you want to say anything about school committee opening?
Uh, can. It's not on my committee. Um, but uh, there is a vacancy at the Silver Lake uh level. Um, no one actually uh ran for that seat uh this spring. Um, and then Jason Fraser was written in even though he wasn't running for it. And uh, given everything that he has going on, that is not something that he is going to continue to do, having fulfilled his terms. Um, so that is an open, open seat. I am, I do have somebody who expressed some interest, but they have yet to get back to me. Should I hear on that, I will be sure to let, let you know. Um, but that is, that is a, that is a, well, we, the appointment would be for a one-year term, but it is a three year term on that. And whoever went on there would end up having to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and, and the Silver Lake School Committee, which is Mike Anton for Plumton right now. And then um, uh, then that would be up for, on the, on the, on the, uh, you know, for election next May uh for the remaining two years of that seat.
So I'm, I'm actually wondering on these openings, particularly um school committee, that there might be some time pressure to get this done, whether um getting out there to social media that there are these openings um to let people know who might be interested in serving. Does, does that make sense?
I agree.
Yeah, makes sense to me. There's a lot going on. They're dealing with COVID as well and um we need representation for Plumton on the Silver Lake Regional School Committee.
If you could post it, Liz, uh, on our Facebook, then I'll put it on Plumton Health in Plumton. Or Bree can do it.
So all four of those positions, committee, board of registrars, council on aging, area 58.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
You will have, even with uh Justin's appointment, we will have a, a seat opening up on the Plumton Historical Commission as well.
I'm sorry, John. What was that? On what board?
On the Plumton Historical Commission, we will have a seat opening up.
Okay.
There as well.
But it's not open yet, right?
Correct. The person has to resign.
I should also mention that uh the assessors has an open seat that has to be filled.
That I think is a different process where that's an elected board, so we should probably get a handle on that and work with them to get that seat filled.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we voted and then it, it becomes elected once the term runs out. Is that it? Anyways, we can, we can figure that out.
Appointing someone to fill the remaining amount of time in the term.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have several appointments. Um, maybe I can just read off the appointment sheets and we can vote for them all uh together. Is that all right with everyone?
Sounds good.
All right. So um, Justin Shepherd to the Historical Commission uh through June 2020. Inez Murphy to Council on Aging through June 2020.
No, that can't be right, Mark.
No, no, that is not right.
What is it? Which one? I can look up in the email that I had sent out.
No, all these say, oh no, forgive me. Uh, my fault. Let's try again. Justin Shepherd, Historical Commission, uh, June 22, 22, right. Uh, Inez Murphy, Council on Aging, uh, June 23. Nancy Butler, Council on Aging, June 23. Mary Lou White, Council on Aging, June 23. Uh, James Mustakaros, uh, Senior Aid, June 21. Joyce Curran, Council on Aging Outreach Worker, June 21. So do I hear a motion to uh appoint all these people to the, to their boards?
So moved.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So these, I think, are on Bree's uh file cabinet. I will stop in tomorrow and sign and can John or Christine do that?
Yeah, I'm going to be in there tomorrow anyway, so I'll sign that.
Great. Okay. Uh, all right, moving along. Um, future agenda items, so um, I, 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 I put this on for the opportunity, if there were particular agenda items to be considered in the future. Um, but I did send out to my fellow selectmen and I think Liz and Bree, uh, this idea, which was triggered a little bit when the police chief was in a month ago and gave us an update. And it occurred to me that um, there are so many department heads and boards, committees, commission chairs that we never get to see. So uh, the suggestion or the thought or the idea that may need some polishing is to invite in one or two of these people each meeting. Um, not for very long, maybe a 10-minute uh, uh, update on what they're up to and our chance to meet them and just talk about issues at hand. Um, so I wanted to put that forth to my fellow board members if that seemed like a reasonable idea and a program to get started on. The goal would be over the period of a fiscal year to have met with all the department heads or all the chairs somewhere during the year.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I like it, John and uh Mark. I think we'll just have to come up with a way to uh be sure that we make time for everybody.
Make time in a meeting or during the year?
In a meeting.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, I, I'd hope to set it up that we could choose a particular time, see them on that time, not have them have to sit through a two-hour meeting. So I, I'm glad to work on that uh with Liz. Anyone in particular you'd like to meet at the next meeting?
Anybody with money. Just a thought. Uh, we also said we were going to, every two months or so, we're going to do the I'm going to call it the parking lot. I forget the new term.
Yeah, that's actually on my list. And um, so we're already coming up to those two months.
It's two months today.
Yeah, so we could do that. I, I put it in as, as October, which would be not the next meeting, but the meeting after that. And then it'd be October, December, February, and April.
Okay, sounds good.
And I, I, that, one other thing I put in there, actually, I mentioned at this point, um, special things is certainly in November, we have the start of the budget process. And we've talked about it in the past, never quite happened. I'd love to see the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, um, and the department chairs. and the department chairs meet at the start of that process and just all be on the same page to begin with. And then especially the one very much on my mind, has been for years, but especially this year, after a few snafus along the way, is I'm absolutely dedicated March first to sit down with the clerk, with the selectman's assistant, with Liz and others to get our yearly appointment process straightened out and cleaned up and and just done more easily and more effectively. So I'm very much looking forward to that one. I did list on the sheet, I sent out certain trainings. We have the open meeting law training coming January 29. I don't know if we need a conflict of interest training or whether the online thing would be sufficient. The other one on my mind is to have a training at some point for department heads, maybe all employees and board chairs in some kind of de-escalation skills. Seems to be an issue that comes up fairly frequently. And I don't know if KMP has something or we could have someone else. But that's a nice training to have in any organization.
Sure.
All right. So we'll move forward with that. I think we are up to the town administrator's update, including COVID-19.
Mark, before we move on, could I just suggest that we possibly get the treasurer in? Because I'd really like an update where we are with land takings and the process with that. So that, and I, because I know that's going to be pertinent to, to John as well and his committee as to where we are in that process. So it'd be nice to get an update on that.
Shall we see if she wants to come in two weeks?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Before we go to my update, could we go back to the sixty-one D forestry?
Absolutely.
So forgive me, I can't tell if I'm looking at the camera. I have to open up. I actually emailed Jonathan Eichmann while this was going and he already responded. He said, if the land is sold and the buyer intends to continue the forestry use, the sale will not trigger the town's right to purchase and notice to the town is not required. He did suggest, however, that Wendy work with the seller and have them in the buyer and have them file an affidavit with her office that just confirms that fact. But no further action from the Board of Selectmen is required on that.
No, we wanted quick action on this. That's beautiful.
I like the multitask.
All right. So will you get in touch, Liz?
Yeah, I'll let Wendy know later tonight or tomorrow what council indicated and what she should ask the buyer or seller for.
Great. That's a great clarification. Sorry I brought up or muddied the waters, but it's good to know for sure that we're okay. All right.
Yeah, absolutely. Otherwise, for my update, we received some good news from the state after a somewhat lengthy conversation with someone who worked there for their Division of Elder Services. We are now in receipt of the ninety-five thousand dollars for the lift at the townhouse and the ADA upgrades, if you will, to the building to enhance access for our senior citizens. So the earmark grant that I think John Trainer was a big part in, in working with our delegation and getting, we do have the money in hand at this point. So we're going to move forward with contacting some of the people that we had contacted. And we'll go from there, but we do have all of the funds in hand now for that grant. So that's good news. I had applied for and received, and I had mentioned this previously, an extension on our Green Communities Grant to take us through September of next year, actually. And one of the things that we're looking to do with that, we still have funds left. Aside from the larger projects at Denne, which I think I talked about in a prior update, we still have funds left for some energy efficient appliances. And so we're trying to work something out at this stage where we could get a freezer for the townhouse. Joy Marble and the Council on Aging are, have been many times in receipt of large deliveries of frozen items like chicken sausage and different things like that. And we only have so much room at the townhouse in the small freezer. So we're trying to work on that, but there is a freezer shortage. And there's a few other odds and ends projects with that that weren't really on the radar before. I think that they wanted to look at the thermostats at the old townhouse. So John Williamson and John Trainer, I'll coordinate with the two of you and we'll make sure that we actually want them to go forward with that project before they do. But it was a small dollar one, but I would just was going back through the list to make sure that we don't leave any money on the table. So we need to make a decision on that.
And Liz, one other thought, you know, we have, we still have the issue with the two lights in the reading room in the library that have these light bulbs that I have never seen before in my life. And when we, when we, what I can tell from trying to find them is that when these lights were originally put in, I think they were a certain, they were an incandescent, certain type of light bulb that probably heated the room at the time. They're enormous. They're literally, the bulbs are like this big. And we have upgraded both of the lights with newer bulbs, one a compact fluorescent and one a LED. And the research that I have found is that those bulbs are not meant to be on a horizontal spin. They're meant to be vertical. That type of bulb that they replaced it with. What was in there to begin with, I don't know. There isn't anything on the housing that says that. And what ends up happening, I think, is that they, literally, they blow apart. So I have the two bulbs here at my house. Both of them are completely blown apart. So I wonder if it makes some sense, if there's any way to leverage any of those funds to get two new lights to replace what's there that are properly energy efficient and can have bulbs in them that don't.
I can definitely look into that. For the most part, they, they're pretty specific about which project they're funding. But where they did do some work on the lights at the library in the past, they might be able to work something out. So I'll contact the Department of Energy Resources and see if what they might be able to do for us.
Yeah, and, and I, I have, I have found a replacement bulb, but again, it comes with a big warning on it that says, don't put it the way that we put it in these lights. Looking at the latest bulb we put in, I can understand why, because it doesn't like that. I think it doesn't cool itself properly because of the way that it's positioned and it's meant for like a street lamp. So these are the lights, the part of the light that provides the uplight and does most of the lighting of the room. But the socket is probably two and a half times the size of a normal socket, so it's not an average bulb that goes in there. And there may be a retrofit it, but it also may be a path of least resistance to find something similar. If it's not a way to go, then we'll have to work with the library anyways to, I'm sure the trustees would like to have some say about what we do if we have to replace something in there.
Okay, I'll put that on my list to follow up on.
I would, yeah, I think as far as the lighting, I would just defer to John. He's certainly more knowledgeable and I'll just hold it up if you have to wait for me.
And also to the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant that we received from MEMA and FEMA, we had our kickoff meeting just a couple of weeks back. So they're off and running with that. The consultant's working on things right now. And all of the department heads who participated have their marching orders as well. We each have different tasks that we need to complete. And we have to go through a list of the critical facilities that were in the old OCPC iteration of the plan. And so we're in the process of updating those. So more to come on that. There will be some public meetings, public workshops, things of that nature relative to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So stay tuned on that. And then also too, we do have a piece in correspondence. We have a request from the Plumpton Fire Association to hold an event fair this coming weekend on the twelfth. It's a craft fair and they want to do it out back up on the field, behind the station and behind the townhouse. And it would be an all-day event, but they're not planning to serve food or anything. But people can basically buy tables and sell crafts. It'll be all set up for social distancing and people will be asked to wear a face covering. So if you could just approve that use of town property, I think this was originally going to be discussed at our August twenty-fourth meeting, but then we, we had to cancel, so it's on now.
I think it's a good idea because we need something to start getting the residents back involved.
So do you need a motion to approve, is that?
I think that we should do it that way, just for consistency, because that's, that's normally what the board does.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Plumpton Fire Association to use the, the ball fields behind the townhouse for a craft fair.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Liz, do you know, are they using tents or anything, any type of cover?
It wasn't mentioned to me. I know that they're having multiple, like, folding tables set up, almost like little booths. So I assume that they might use those little pop-up tents, like a ten by ten or a twelve by twelve for each little booth.
Okay, yeah, I just wonder with tents that Joy purchased, what, what those are like and whether or not, you know, they could do something like that.
So those are similar, like a pop-up tent style. What I can do tomorrow, I can talk to Captain Church and just mention that Joy has those tents. She also bought some folding tables and chairs as well. So we can let them know where those are located in case they need them for their event.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other administrator updates?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, correspondence?
That was it in correspondence.
I think we're up to minutes. So we have the minutes of August tenth. Did everyone have a chance to take a peek at these?
Yep.
Any corrections, suggestions?
I thought they looked fine.
Yeah.
I, I generally do. I, I might suggest adding one word on the third page. Town Administrator Update, TA discussed the recent rumor of the Council on Aging being dissolved. I thought, I thought we might add the word, the false rumor, just to make clear that that's what it was. Otherwise.
Add what word, Mark?
We're gonna add the word false before rumor.
Okay.
Okay. Otherwise, these minutes look beautiful. They're great. I think this format would come the closest to perfection. Nice highlights, good words. Well done. Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from eight-ten with Mark's amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think we're up to, we're up, well, dates to remember, we meet in two weeks or two weeks from yesterday, September twenty-first. And we're up to raves.
All right, can I go first?
Of course.
All right, my rave is Linda Letty and, and you, Mark, too. And the hard work that you guys have put in to make the Two Brooks Preserve come together. I know there's been many people involved, other people from conservation. And it has definitely been a labor of love and all of the people who helped with fundraising and everything. It's nice to see that it's come together. So thank you so much for your hard work. And, and Linda for her continued efforts on, you know, water and, and other conservation issues for the town. It's greatly appreciated.
Second then.
Would you like to rave, John?
Sure, I've got a little different rave tonight. I'm gonna rave about something in another town. I don't know if you've been over to the playground at the Halifax Field next to the library. But they have an organization called HOPS. And I think they've spent, I thought I saw a figure of over two hundred thousand dollars. But go over and take a look at it. It's finally finished. It's gorgeous. The kids have a great place over there. It's a, it's something they should be proud of. So that's my rave.
And my rave is for town administrator. I was so jumpy all last week while she was away. I'm so glad she's back. I don't know what's happening to me. I'm getting more and more nervous as time goes by, but thank God. Welcome back, Liz.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
Okay. Any final words? We've done it. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor, aye. A good couple of weeks to everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.